I'd like to call this meeting of the School District of Baraboo Board of Education to order for Monday, June 25th, 2012 with roll call. Mr. Cummings is not present. Mr. McNeven?
Here.
Mr. Mearing is not present. Mr. Mortimer?
Here.
Ms. Riley?
Here.
Mr. Viedro?
Here.
And Bodak here. Continue with the pledge, which is on the screen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the June 11th, 2012 meeting as printed. Motion by Riley, seconded in by McNeven. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Motion and minutes carry. Brings us to correspondence. I have none. Any other board members with correspondence? Hearing none. Any administrative correspondence? Hearing none. Brings us to public viewpoints. Is there anybody here for public viewpoints tonight? Any public viewpoints? Any public viewpoints? Hearing none. Brings us to item four on the agenda, which is the staff recognition. And we have an opportunity tonight to recognize our Director of Business Services, Mr. Long, who has been with the district for a number of years and is retiring at the end of this month. And on behalf of the School District of Baraboo and the Board of Education, I'd like to present you with a mantle clock. It's not a wristwatch. And on the plaque it says, "James J. Long, School District of Baraboo, 1989 to 2012, in appreciation for 23 years of dedicated service." We have it set with the right time. And we may have Jim at future meetings in an official capacity, potentially at our annual meeting. We'll see how everything works through.
Sean says yes for sure.
And here's your box I've got over there so we can make sure you're meeting. Brings us to the portion of the agenda entitled, "Reports." And we have an update on the Jack Young Middle School wall project. And here to update us from MSA is Al Somansky and his supporting crew on the ground, Patrick Ackers. So, Mr. Somansky, you got a PowerPoint?
Pictures.
Speak a thousand words.
Yeah, a lot of pictures. Yes, they do. The big question is where to begin. There's a lot that's gone on in the last couple of weeks. And it's amazing what you can uncover when you start to remove bricks off of the building. So, two things that I'm here for tonight. One is just to give you an update as to where things are at, what we've been finding, and what we've been having to do up and above and beyond what was planned for on the plans. Things that you've been uncovering. But the second part of it is to get direction from you as to how far do we go to correct the items that we've been finding as we take bricks off of the building and uncover the construction behind that. So, keep that thought in mind as we go through the photographs, and then we'll talk about that at the end. And we started this job as soon as school got out, even before the kids were out. I don't know if everybody's been going by there checking it out, but they moved onto the site before the kids were out of school. And afternoon, I think, the students were out of the building. They started tearing it apart. This obviously faces the Circle Drive. You know, the brick was taken off of that section of the building exposing the steel. First day that we were tearing brick off the building, we started running into problems right away. And not necessarily problems, but we started uncovering conditions that we could not have seen with the brick on the building. And this is on the first floor, on the ground level. It's Classroom 113 that faces the Circle Drive. And this would be where the window was. The windows were taken out up above, and so this is the block that's in place below the window. And what we noticed, there were no cabinets at this location where they tore this block out. This block was scheduled to remain. And we noticed on the inside of the building that there was a crack there. And when you grabbed onto the wall, you could actually wiggle the wall. And this black that you see down here is a plastic flashing that's flexible, and it turns back into the wall, which is normal construction. But it had broken the bond enough with the mortar and the block that the wall basically had no stability to it. You could actually jiggle the wall. So, we were concerned about leaving it in place, and so we made the decision that that block had to be taken out. So, there's been additional work that's already been authorized. This block has been torn down, and new block is now back in its place. This was another area. It's probably kind of hard to understand, but they actually had, there's wood that is laid in between a course of masonry up near the top of the building, which I don't know, it's not typical construction for today. I don't think it was 37 years ago. But at least part of our, in part of our plans, we were tearing this masonry out of here. So, that's just something that was, the wood and everything was taken out of that wall.
Why was that wood in there?
Why was it there? Good question. You have me. There's a steel beam directly behind there, and the top flange of the beam is at that location. And the block, oops. This block is sitting on a steel flange right here, the top flange of the beam, but most of it was hanging out over that beam. And so, they put that piece of wood in there. I don't know why they went to just put mortar in there, but instead there's a piece of wood and it runs the full length of that.
Al, is that styrofoam insulation, the white that we see between the brick?
Between the brick and the block, yes.
Maybe they had to gain with the block, inch and a half, that piece of wood.
Well, why wouldn't you have used mortar or another piece of block as opposed to wood?
This is probably easier.
There you go. Now, this, another section of the wall. This is supposed to be concrete block, and there's mortar and bricks cobbled in. What we really found in general is that the workmanship was very poor, I guess to say the least. The whole reason we did this job was because of the rusting steel, and we found a lot of rusting steel. This is the bottom plate of the beam that goes across the top of the windows, and this is the bottom section of the beam. So, just like we saw in the observation holes that we cut, it was continuous like that across the top of that beam. This is up at the roof level. What you're seeing is that this is the roof beam. Pictures are a little distorted because of the waviness of the screen. It doesn't actually look like that, but they started tearing down the block below that beam. And they're showing this on all the, for some reason, this is where the roof beam is right here. And these courses of block that went in front of the beam, they stepped them out. And all the design of the building obviously didn't allow enough space for all these materials to be put where they needed to go, so they had to push things out. They had to cut the insulation thinner. The airspace basically disappeared in order to get the materials in place. This is a steel column. The brown is a steel column rising up, and there's conduit around it. There was no masonry in front of the column. The only thing that separated the steel column of the building and the outside was this piece of white, I'm trying to use the pointer, this little piece of white foam. That's white beadboard styrofoam passed in front of that column. There's a steel connection. This is a steel beam right here that goes across the top of the windows, and it came over to the steel column, which is in here. And there's a piece of steel here to connect it. There's one bolt. The other bolt was missing. It was never even installed. Another similar connection, the steel beam coming from the right and the steel column on the left and this connection plate. It's kind of hard to see, but there's holes down in here in the beam, and there's holes back here in that connection angle that were supposed to line up with two bolts going through. And the bolts aren't there. They did a little bit of tack welding, and that was about it. This is a shelf angle that runs at the level of the upper floor that was holding brick on the building. A lot of bad rust going on on that. They missed putting embedment plates into the concrete floor to hold up different structural members. And in this case, they bolted this plate on after the fact, and they didn't bother to cut the top of it so that the shelf angle across the top could go back up against the concrete, the edge of the concrete floor. And so, down here on the right, there's an embedment plate. That piece of angle, which was holding all the brick up from the second floor up to the roof, was very poorly attached to the building. It's actually amazing that it still stayed there. And then you see there's a piece of reinforcing. This is like a one-inch diameter reinforcing bar that's supposed to be encased in concrete, but it was placed so close to the edge of the concrete that all the concrete just fell away, or was maybe even never there to begin with. That's what it looked like. We got it all cleaned up, all this existing steel, all the rust is being removed, and the primer is being removed. So, this is what it looked like before the new paint was installed. So, it's amazing what you can do when you remove the rust. Well, this was a good one. This, the window, was a window up here on the top of the picture, and this is the masonry below the window. This is a piece of galvanized conduit that was actually running in the airspace between the brick and the block, and, which is not where you put conduit. So, it shouldn't have been there in the first place, and it had holes rusted through it that water could go right inside where all the electrical wires are.
What was it a conduit for?
Electrical wires.
Okay.
Yeah. Electricity and water don't mix.
It should have been inside the block, right?
It should have been, yeah. Same conduit, just turns and it went up the space around the column. The column was just wrapped with 15 column roofing. One of the things that we saw, you know, last time I was here, we talked about the drooping or the deflection that you saw in the brick on the outside of the building. Well, in this, the steel angle that's fastened on to, this is the concrete floor at the second level, and then this is that angle that supposedly is to be fastened on to it. We took a string line across that angle, and in the center between the columns, which are 32 feet apart, there was three-quarters of an inch of deflection, and, which I guess really isn't all that out of the ordinary, because on 32 feet, that's probably pretty typical deflection. So, what we figured is just that with the concrete, with the age and the load that's on it, it has deflected that much, and it just shows up in the brick, and that's why we were seeing that up and down in between the columns. So, it just basically was starting to come to light, you know, why things were happening. This is the steel beam that was over the top of the windows in Classroom 313, which is on the third floor above the science room that is at the far south end of the building on the Circle Drive side. This job has been interesting in the fact that every time I walk onto the site, I see something different. When I walk onto the job and I'm standing there looking at something, and one of the workers walked by me and says, "Man, can you believe this?" And it really has been that way every single day. Like the steel plate on the bottom of this beam that was over the top of the windows, this is a pile of rust in there, but it's about an inch space, maybe an inch and a half on the high side. And the welds were completely rusted gone, not only on the outer edge, but on the inside edge as well. I can't believe that the brick and the block were still hanging on the building with the amount of deterioration that was in here. And here's a closer picture that you can see the amount of rust and the space that's in there.
Have you determined what caused that, Al?
Water.
And how the water got in there?
Well, one of the things that we found is they've been tearing the building apart is that on these, the walls, in this particular case, the west wall where the windows are, the brick and the block came apart much easier than on the south wall. And from discussions that we've had on site, the guys tearing it apart as well as myself, is with all that steel spanning 32 feet, there's a lot of deflection that was going on. The roof would load up with snow, the steel comes down, the snow melts, the steel comes up. The wind would blow, and the walls moving in and out. All that movement, we believe, has caused the brick and the mortar and the block and the mortar to loosen the bond. And so, it was easier for them to tear that wall apart where the windows were, as opposed to where you go on the south side. It's brick from the foundation all the way up, and you don't have that movement up and down all the time. So, with the loss of bond, and then when the wind blows and it rains, that water is getting forced into that cavity, and you're getting that much more moisture in there, causing the rusting to occur. Plus, there were conditions where, in places there wasn't insulation, where you would have expected there to be insulation. It could have been condensation from the heat and the cold and moisture getting in that area and condensing.
With that much rust, how compromised is the beam itself? How much of it have we lost?
Yeah, well, we've taken it out. That beam is gone and now been replaced with a brand new one, and that was part of the project. So, it's out of there.
But they're going to paint those and everything like they did on the wall above the wall.
Yep. The existing steel that was staying, that's all been cleaned down to bare metal. They started using a power tool to remove the metal or the rust in the paint, and they've now switched to a blasting. It's like sand blasting, but they're using, it's like a glass material. And it's doing a good job of taking all the rust in the paint right down to bare metal, and then it's getting primed and gets two coats of paint. It's a good, high-quality epoxy paint.
Al, so if I understand correctly from earlier conversations, for lack of the stabilizing of the wall, of the outer wall being connected to the inner parts, that exacerbated the movement, which exacerbated the mortar giving way, which allowed water to come in, and it's just a cascading effect, one after the other, and now we're living with that?
Yes, that is true.
And this is not typical of general construction that you've come across over in 30 years, 40 years of this kind of work?
No.
Okay. Because, yeah, and, oh my gosh, can you believe this? And, oh my gosh, can you believe that?
That's what we've been doing and saying every day. It's, yeah. I'd sent a video to Jim. It was first couple of days when they're doing tear-off, and the masons were up, or there was a demo crew up on the second floor on the scaffolding, and they were tearing the block down. And the superintendent was there, and I'm like, "You better tell your guys to be careful," because it actually looked like the entire section of that wall was going to fall off of the building because this beam was so bad. And as they were pulling the block off of the wall, I could see the entire wall move. So, I had the superintendent go get his camera so he could take video. So, if anybody wants to see it, Jim has about a 10 megabyte video. And I had him just grab onto the wall to shake it, and you can literally see the wall wobbling.
Well, I tell you, one of my greatest concerns is how we communicate this to our public, that we are responsible for ensuring the safety of our children and the stability of this building at whatever cost it needs, because things were not done correctly in the past. And it is not a choice this board has about whether to correct or not to correct. We have a responsibility to ensure the safety of our children and of our staff, and it sounds to me like that is the frame of reference that you're approaching the project from, and I thank you.
Can I start from there? You know, just another progress shot of that section of the building with the wall totally torn off looks a little different. While back, we talked about all the rusting of the ties in the wall that hold the brick to the concrete block, and that's what you see here. I mean, these are the wire ties. You can see where the wire tie here is totally rusted. You know, here it's intact, here it's totally rusted, here it's somewhat intact, but where it is intact, you know, it's still rusted away. There's not a complete amount of wire there. And here's another section. I mean, you can just see, I mean, this is the condition of what was left of the wire. You know, not a lot to hold the brick on the building anymore. Here's a sec, there should be another piece of wire in here. It was non-existent. It was never laid in the wall to begin with. It's not that it rusted away, it just wasn't there. Another shot as progress works its way around the south side of the building. This is the stairwell on the end of the building. This wall and the stairwell was not in very good condition. It was laid that way. It was laid in poor condition to begin with. There's mortar joints that didn't have mortar in them. You know, and then you saw earlier pictures where brick was put in place. Clay brick was used where there should have been concrete block. I can't say anything other than it was just very poor workmanship in putting it together. This was an interesting one. Little bit of a hard picture, probably don't understand, but this is the outside of the concrete block wall right here, and this is that black plastic flashing down below it. This is on the second floor on the south wall. And we could see that there was a crack horizontally in the block, eight inches up off of the floor, but really couldn't describe why it was there or how it happened. But once we tore the brick off, we were able to see what was going on. I don't know, can you guys see the red dot on here? It's kind of small, but, you know, this is the mortar joint, and this is the block. This is a very close-up picture, but the shaded portion is about a quarter of an inch. That concrete block has slid a quarter of an inch out of the building. And what we, what we think has happened is when they were laying the brick and the block up, it appears that the brick and the block were laid together. They didn't lay the block first all the way up and then come back down and lay the brick up. They laid the brick and the block together, they put the foam on the wall, and then they laid the brick up. And directly below this, eight inches below that, and I've got another picture of that steel angle that was supposed to be fastened to the wall, but for 32 feet, there were no steel embedment plates in the concrete. They had nothing to fasten the angle to, and they didn't bother to fasten the angle to it. It spanned 32 feet just all by itself, basically, although I guess it wasn't by itself. Let me find the picture here. They had, right here, there's a washer. It's about an inch and a half round washer that they welded on top of that angle so that that would sit on top of the floor. Wasn't fastened to the floor, just kind of temporarily sat there. So, what we think is then as they started to lay brick on top of that angle, which was supposed to hold the brick up in place, being that it wasn't fastened to the building, it obviously started to give away and pull away from the building. And when it did that, we feel that the brick pulled the block along with it. And that's why that previous picture, you see that gap, that it just actually slid that with it. And that happened, I think, the day that they were building the building, and it's been like that ever since. So, we're going to correct that. That's, this particular wall on the second floor of Classroom 313, we've gotten a price from Vogel Brothers just as of late today to tear that wall down in its entirety and rebuild it with brand-new materials. Another issue that we ran into, the plan was to add reinforcing in the existing concrete block walls by cutting openings at the top and the bottom of the wall and putting the rebar down in through the wall. But what we found on the first day of tearing down is that all of the cores, they were filled with mortar at every joint, so we couldn't get the bars through it. So, all the cores are blocked. So, what we're looking at doing, this was just a hole that they cut into the block to see how much of the block was filled with mortar. But I have a picture coming later on. What we're looking at doing is cutting a three-inch wide slot, full height of the wall, cleaning all that mortar out of there so we can put the reinforcing bar in the wall. They'll put plywood over the top of the wall, screw to the wall temporarily to hold the grout in the wall, and then fill that core with grout and then remove the plywood.
Al, I'm definitely against that.
Okay.
I was talking to Jim this morning. And when we figured this project, we figured taking all the block out, didn't we?
That was the original plan.
And to me, this, like I said the last time, this is a past job, and I do not agree with doing that at all.
Okay.
I do not think that, and those holes in those block are only like that big, or they're three, they're three whole block, aren't they?
They are. Yep, they're three cores instead of two.
I'm definitely against that.
Well, let's come back to that when we get through all the rest of this. This is a section on, it would be the west wall of the stairwell. And I mentioned where, you know, there was mortar that was just never laid in between the blocks, and this is an example of that. Other picture, you know, just of the rust that occurred with the wire ties, you know, completely rusted through. There's, here's a couple of courses where they never even put the wire in the wall. It didn't exist from day one. This is the soffit at the entry where you walk into the stairs near that corridor. We had taken the steel beam out, and the soffit was somewhat supported off of that steel beam. So, when they took the beam out, the edge of the soffit dropped down. So, right now, we have a question, and I posed this question to Jim, you know, as we're in cutting these different conditions of the building, some items are completely obvious that it has to be torn down and redone. But then you get into conditions like this, well, you know, do we tear this down and redo it, or do we just kind of put things back together and leave well enough alone? You know, it isn't terrible. It's not going to fall down. You know, we can, we can put it back together and make it whole. But this is one of the questions as to, do we tear this plaster soffit out? The insulation up above, you know, is somewhat poor at this point. We can make a lot of improvements if we were to replace it, but it's all a matter of spending district money, and it just really comes down to a matter of whether you want to tear it down and replace it, or just put it back together the way that it is. Here's another spot, there's about a 12-foot section on the west wall of the stair where there's about an inch and a quarter gap, and that's what you're seeing here, that there's no mortar, there's no nothing. You just look right inside of the block. And this is something that we can repair by filling this with mortar. And another area where it's a block wall, and I don't know, for some reason, the block steps out of the wall two inches. They had to stop the foam on either side of it. There's brick that was patched in. Not quite sure why that was done. That's that angle we talked about. Another progress picture as they move around the building. It was a great shot of what the wall looks like with the brick coming off and just, you know, the poor condition of what's left of the wire. And this is due to water getting into the wall and rusting the steel. At the top of the wall, this is the top two and a half of courses.
I got a question for you. Is all that block coming down that you just showed?
This particular wall, where this is, this would be the south wall of the stair. This wall is scheduled to remain.
And then how do we, how do we, is there a method for securing that brick and putting it back up where we're 100% sure that it's done right?
Yes.
Okay.
And this, it's amazing, this looks nasty right now. There is one wall where they've, as part of the plan, to cut this wire off flush with the face of the wall and to clean up the mortar on the wall, actually cleaning all the mortar. This wall isn't too bad, but you can see down in this area, there's a lot of mortar that's just sticking out of the wall. That wasn't anticipated to be that way, so we're going to have to pay an extra to get that cleaned off. But the one section of the wall that they've cleaned up, they've cut the wire off, they've cleaned the mortar off, so the wall looks, you know, nice and flat. It's a huge improvement. It looks good. So, in any areas where there's mortar missing...
And then, so what do we have to do? We have to drill the block to put the wire, put new wire on?
Yes. There's stainless steel fasteners with stainless steel plates that they will drill. There's two screws for each fastener. They get placed 16 inches on center horizontally and 16 inches on center vertically. They get screwed to the wall, and then there's a stainless steel wire tie that comes off of that They get screwed to the wall, and then there's a stainless steel wire tie that comes off of that into the brick.
Are all those head joints and, and things fallen, those blocks that you're gonna leave? And then, is there any vertical reinforcement in that wall?
There is, you know, the rusting. Go back to that photo. The rusting is all from the face of the block out. Where we've taken block down, the wire inside of the wall, you can still see what, you know, mill galvanizing was on it, it's still there. There's no rust on the wire inside of the block wall.
But are there any vertical rods going up through that six-inch block?
None.
See, this is what I, my, my point was, a six-inch wall in stack bond is a weak wall. I was talking to Jim this morning and, and like I said, originally, we figured to take all the block out.
That was the original plan.
Now, if we don't do that, are we gonna have to come back ten years from now and, and replace these block? Or are we better off to take the block, block out now? Of course, then I suggested that you should go with running bond instead of stack bond. Well, I understand they won't match inside the building, but who's gonna notice that after a while? And you're gonna have a lot stronger wall, and you could have vertical reinforcement in it too.
Yeah, with, with the, the stack bond block, the grouting of the cores and the reinforcing, you get a much better continuity of the grout column all the way up and down the wall. Where if you do a running bond, of course, with a two-core block.
The holes match.
The holes match, yeah. This is all three-core block, so it wouldn't work out quite as well.
And I don't think they make three-core, uh, three-hole blocks anymore, do they?
I don't know.
Probably not after this project.
Yeah, two, two-core block is more than normal.
Then, are there, on the inside of those block, are there head joints and cracks on the inside the blocks?
There, there are shrinkage cracks. Around the stairwell, it's more common. And there, it's eight-inch block, around the stairwell, not six-inch. And we, we tried to figure out, you know, we've been tearing things apart. We've been trying to figure out why are there so many, they're all vertical for the most part, the shrinkage cracks. And they're very, they're tight cracks, they're not, you know, wide cracks. The only thing that we can, well, there's two things that we can come to some kind of a conclusion to best as you can thirty-seven years later. Where the wire tie, the wire ties, you know, were spliced, they're just butt at the ends, they're not lapped. And everywhere where it was butt, there's a shrinkage crack. So, you know, it created a weakened plane. If it was lapped, that wouldn't necessarily happen. The only other thing that I could think of is that the block that was laid in the wall probably wasn't completely fully cured out. They would have created shrinkage cracks, they pretty much, around the stairwell, occur every thirty-two inches on center. So, that's about the only reason why I could figure out why there's that large a number of shrinkage cracks.
How far are you into the OG discovering stage? Well, here's another problem.
Every wall we open up, it keeps going.
Oh, okay, so are you forty percent into this, that you are forty percent sure we've found, we've at least seen everything? That's, I'm not asking for a guarantee that you have found everything, but, or are you like ninety percent? We know what the issues are.
Yeah, for this summer's work, I would say with the tear-off, they're probably about fifty percent on the tear-off of the brick. So, we've got fifty percent of the, this summer's work to go for tear-off. And for the conditions that we've seen for this first fifty percent, I'm pretty well assured we're gonna see the same conditions on the next fifty percent.
With the potential of being as bad if not worse?
Yes.
Just.
Around the stairwell, the west wall was the first wall that was taken off on the stair. That was much worse than the south wall, which they moved around to after that. The south wall looked better. Trying to go back to answer Ed's question in combination with yours. From a structural standpoint, with cutting the slots in the wall, tearing the, let me just go to that picture. This is, this is the slot that's been cut, this is a test area. They, they basically wanted to see how long it was gonna take to cut that slot and clean the mortar out. It looks really good. I mean, when you go up close to it, you look at the slot, all the cores line up, all the mortar is cleaned out. They'll build a place to rebar in that wall and then put a piece of plywood temporarily on the wall so they can grout that. From a structural standpoint, this is going to occur every thirty-two inches on center. That'll be a strong wall when we're all done. I, I don't have any structural concerns about the structural integrity of that wall. Cosmetically on the inside, there are some hairline shrinkage cracks. Those are planned to get ground out and tuck pointed with mortar.
Could you build, would a replacement wall be stronger structurally than this solution? If you were gonna tear it down to the foundation and rebuild it appropriately?
We would still put the bars in at thirty-two inches on center.
Correct.
So, there would be no change there. I didn't see anything in this concrete block that led me to believe that this was a weak concrete block. I mean, the block, when they take them out of the wall, it's amazing, most of the block are whole and complete. You know, the mortar's not cleaned to, or the block aren't falling apart or anything like that. So, the block appeared to be decent. The one benefit that you would have in laying a new wall would be, what's here right now, there's only one horizontal wire that runs through the wall. It's on the inside face. If we were to lay a new wall, it would have two wires in it. But the wire is not structural, it's only there to control shrinkage. And it's, the saying with concrete is, there's one thing I can guarantee you about concrete, is it's gonna crack. This is no different, it's a concrete product. You know, you can have the wire in the wall, but you still are gonna have hairline cracks that are going to occur.
Al? Are you saying there are opportunities to fix, in a safe manner, certain sections of the wall? And there are opportunities, or there are needs to tear down other sections?
Yeah, and that's what our plan is right now, is the second floor classroom, classroom three thirteen. We, the south wall, we wanna tear that wall down, that's where that block had slid out. That we wanna tear down, full height. The wall on the first floor, classroom one thirteen, is where the slot was cut in. And there, the wall looks substantial, that we can cut these slots in, put the reinforcing in the wall and grout it. And structurally, it'll be a solid, sound wall. There's walls, the wa, the eight-inch walls around the stairwell, there's street walls around the stairwell. There, there's four locations that are scheduled to have, you know, the rebar put in the wall. That's a case where when you look at that wall, and this is one that I posed to Jim, I'm like, how far do we go with this? The walls around that stairwell are load-bearing, so that the roof structure, which are barge joints and metal deck, bear on that wall. So, if we tear those walls down, the contractor has to come in there, has to shore the roof up. They have to shore the concrete floor up because those walls are holding the floor in the roof. They have to protect the inside of the building, so, you know, it's an expensive endeavor. Then they have to tear those walls down and rebuild them with brand-new. So, you know, how far do we go with this? Do, do we tear it down? And then, and this is a question for the board. Or do we cut the vertical slots, clean the mortar out of the cores, put the rebar in the wall and grout it solid? Structurally, it'll be fine. On the inside, it's already in the plan and in the price to grind out the interior mortar joints and, and tuck point mortar in and repaint those entire walls. Structurally, the walls will be solid. So, you know, there are areas.
So, what do we gain? Piece of bind or something, or what, I mean?
Yeah, it's just, you know, you're putting, you're spending the money to put brick on the building. You get rid of all that nasty stuff that's there and just build a brand-new right from the beginning? Or just leave it the way that it is?
If I'm hearing correctly, you have assessed that the concrete blocks are in good condition. And wherever they're in good condition, you feel by putting these support beam, the, the metal rods in, that that would be structurally as sound, maybe not cosmetically, but structurally as sound?
It will be.
As something else, where the concrete block are still viable?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Well, now, when they grind those joints out in the inside, are the blocks cracked on the outside at the same place probably?
It's kind of hard to tell because, you know, on the inside, all the joints were tooled. On, on the outside, nothing is tooled because they basically laid a block and they stuck the foam up against it. They didn't stick it, they just pushed it up against the block. It might even have been setting there from the looks of it. It's almost kind of like maybe they set the foam and put a block down from some of it, it's kind of hard to tell. But I'm assuming they laid a block and then they put sixteen inches of foam up against it and then they laid sixteen inches of brick up to match it. And they did the sixteen inches of the block and sixteen inches of brick.
But, but if you grind out the inside, to be structurally, I would think, wouldn't you also have to grind out those joints on the outside if they're cracked?
Well.
Otherwise, you're only doing half the job, wouldn't you be doing? And is that Mason contractor gonna guarantee that if he just grinds out one side?
The grinding out of the inside is simply cosmetic. I mean, to, to make the, the reason we're grinding out the joint is cosmetic, to make the crack go away. It has some structural characteristics to it, but that wall is basically standing vertically from the floor up to the roof, let's say. And so, it's, you can look at each sixteen-inch wide block as its own section of wall essentially. Now granted, where we're, where we're grouting, we're only putting grouted cores in that eight-inch wall around the stair at four foot on center. So, there's a couple of block in between there. But with as tight as those cracks are, there's, you know, what's called the aggregate interlock through a crack, you know, that keeps it from moving. And, and just from the design of a wall, structurally, it's going to be sound. Because if I wasn't comfortable with it, I'd be standing here saying it's gotta come down. Like the one wall where the block actually shifted out, that's gotta get taken down. Or the walls underneath the, underneath the windows in front of the cabinets, those walls had to come down. I mean, the bond was totally broken, the wall was sitting there wiggling. There was no question that had to be taken down or replaced. But there are some conditions, like around the stairwell, where you wouldn't have to.
Could you repeat the two things you wanted us to consider tonight?
Yeah, so number one would be the soffit at the entry alcove. Right here. It's a plaster soffit, it's wired up in place, which is standard construction. There's, there's brick, you can see the bottom of the brick right here. And that's the same way on both sides of that soffit. It runs about sixteen inches above the soffit, up to the concrete roof, or the concrete floor above. On one side, the brick looks like it stayed in place. On the other side, there's about a sixteenth of an inch gap where the brick has actually dropped down a little bit.
But it's enough of a concern for you to bring it up?
Yes.
Okay.
But, we, we can put it back together again and it'll be structurally sound. It's just a matter of how far do you want to go with tearing things apart and replacing them with brand-new? We can put this back together again, it'll be structurally sound, it'll resist weather. It's just that, it's like now's our chance, if we want to tear it out, now would be the time to do it.
What do you achieve by tearing it out?
Uh, you'd get a new soffit with an adequate vapor barrier, which there is none right now. They didn't do that thirty-seven years ago, so that's not out of the ordinary. The insulation that's up there, I wish I had a picture of it, I don't think I did, or did I? Yeah, I guess not. There, there was a photograph that I had, had taken. The insulation, it's just six-inch bad insulation that was in there. But it's like, I don't know what they did, it's, some of it's wired down, some of it's not, there's gaps in between it. You know, I mean, we could, we could improve the condition greatly by tearing it down and replacing it.
Okay.
But we can make it work the way that it is. So, it's more a matter of now's the time to do it, but do you want to spend the money to do it? Or do we just put it back together and make it whole again?
And what was the second thing to consider?
The walls around the stairwell, as to whether they get torn down entirely and built with new, or whether we just reinforce them in place. And then Ed brings up a third option, or, or, you know, a third item to make a decision on. And that's where the six-inch block, where, right here, on the first floor, we're planning on cutting a slot in the wall and putting a rebar in there, that versus completely tearing it down or replacing it.
Do we know how much it would cost to make these improvements?
I do on some of them, we're, we're still waiting for some pricing on the other ones. For an example, on this one wall, we're talking about one thirty-two-foot section of wall on one floor. So, basically, one classroom wall. The additional work is to cut the slots and clean the mortar out of the wall. Roughly, it's about two thousand dollars to do that. If we tear the wall down, because the, the wall above this, we have a price from the contractor that came through late today. Same wall, but just right above it, but the same area, thirty-two foot long, one height of one classroom. It's, I think it's about eleven thousand dollars to tear it down and build brand-new. So, for one classroom, one wall, you're talking an add of about nine thousand dollars to build a brand-new.
I guess I'm kind of curious as to, you know, what, what the board has to say at this point. Because when I, when I look at the project and, and the costs involved in the entire project, we are having difficulties comprehending how we're gonna pay for this existing project, yet alone phase two and phase three that have yet to come. Um, you know, we're gonna have to have a conversation with the stakeholders and our taxpayers and say, this is what needs to happen at this location, and these are the dollars that have to be spent. I'd rather spend the time explaining how we're fixing it right from the ground up and that it was not done correctly twenty-seven years ago and we're now paying the price, or thirty-seven years ago.
So.
Thirty-seven years ago. And clearly, we're paying the price, but I would rather know that we're doing everything appropriate rather than trying to explain how we fixed this section, changed this section, left this section, but didn't. I, I don't want to say, it, it's difficult to pinch pennies or to find meaningful solutions on a project of this scale when, you know, maybe a section of wall might save us some time and money by core drilling or maybe you just knock it all down and do it right.
I would say that my greatest concern, as I say, is the structural soundness. And for that, we depend upon, you know, MSA, Alan, and your recommendation. And that's really what, you know, I would look toward and weigh heavily in, in terms of making decision. I think where there are areas that you feel like you do that it needs to be a tear-down, then you have my confidence and vote. Where you feel structurally, and the other engineers feel structurally, this is appropriate, you know, I would, I would tend to go with that recommendation. Cosmetically, I have less concerns, you know, it's the structural integrity of what we're talking about. At the same point, I, I hear what, you know, Sean is saying. Are, are we gonna build a whole new junior, you know, middle school?
We are, one piece at a time.
And the question is whether we do it one piece at a time or whether we do it all at once?
We have to do it in phases, that's clear, because we've got students in there nine months out of the year.
Well, that's, that's something else to figure into this, and is not only the, the additional dollars to tear down, it's the additional time. If we tear down the walls entirely and rebuild them, this job will not be finished for the start of school. and rebuild them, this job will not be finished for the start of school. There's not enough time.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll focus on the areas that are most important, like the classrooms, but the south end of the building, like around the stairwell. You know, what, what the goal would be is to get the concrete block laid so that the inside of the, get the windows in, so that the inside of the building could be put back together. But we'd have to be working in September to get the brick on the building.
But that was clearly a risk.
And we did talk about that a few...
I, I mean, I, I really think that this is, since this is Phase One and we have how much more to go?
Quite a ways.
Quite a ways?
Oh, yeah.
Then I would say we, we take our lessons from what we've discovered here. You probably know a far greater amount of time in design and engineering and costing and estimates for moving forward for the next couple of years as we work our way around this building. Let's learn what we learn. Let's build it up right and...
Will there be another, after, say, Phase One is complete, is there an inspection? I guess, you know, a certificate of occupancy. I don't know why all of that didn't come into play 37 years ago and an inspection may have. Because as you're saying, some of these things were never done. It's not a question of deterioration and water damage. Some of these things were never done. But will there be another inspection? Do we have people that are, additional people who are, officials who come in and look and evaluate what we've done in Phase One? Maybe then lead us into decisions that will help us in Phase Two? What happens when Phase One is finished?
That would be me.
That would be you.
I mean, I'm out there almost on a daily basis. So, you know, as they tear this apart, I'm there looking at, as they're rebuilding it, I'm looking at it. So you can't wait until the end when it's all put together, because then it's too late.
No, I understand that. But I wonder, isn't there an inspection process?
Yeah, so that would be me.
That's you. Okay.
Yep. I'm out there on a daily basis, pretty much.
Well, one of the things that we talked about, you know, we're pretty certain that we're going to find these conditions as we continue around the building. And I said, you know, we can't wait till next spring to start making decisions on what we had hoped was going to be Phase Two of a two-phase project. It may only be Phase Two of a three-phase project, because we may not have enough time to get both walls done in one summer. But I said, knowing what we've learned, we've got to redesign the project.
That's what I'm kind of getting at.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And, and that's, we've already talked about that. So as this project finishes, Al's going to take into account everything that he's learned from this first part, as we start looking at the second part, start getting the costing, so we know what we're looking at before the project even starts right here from now.
Can we kind of, as a board, look at these one at a time and decide what we want to do? I mean, Ed, having an explanation on this south wall, do you have anything to add from your previous comment that you think should all come down? Are you comfortable with this recommendation or not?
I'm not comfortable with, with filling that little core, you know, with a rod every, what, every, every inch. I'm not comfortable with that at all. But you, no doubt, are smarter than I am. So if you say it's structurally sound, then I have to go with that, although I'm not a big believer in it.
Well, I'm just, on the south, the south end, structurally, that's the best wall that you've seen, correct? From a structure standpoint, there's no windows, so you haven't had any shifting because of the windows. Cosmetically, it's, it's going to be little or no effect whether it's torn out or whether it's this method that you use to fix it.
Yeah, cosmetically from the inside.
If you kept, if you kept going with stacked bond, there'd be no difference. But if you went to running bond, which I think makes the wall stronger, then you'd have a cosmetic...
Well, explain briefly the running bond. You know, one's laid this way, the other's laid vertically, and you have a stronger structure if it's running bond as opposed to stacked bond. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, what you see here, this is stacked bond. Each individual block is laid directly, one right on top of the other. They align. So all the vertical joints align, like they do in this building, right here. This is all stacked bond. They're stacked one on top of the other. Running bond is the block are staggered 50 percent. So they overlap. So it's basically toothed together. And what Ed's referring to is it makes a stronger wall. It does.
And that would be an option only if we ripped the wall apart to then have it be stacked, obviously. I mean...
To go to running bond.
I'm sorry.
And it'll look, you know, it'll be an appearance issue from the inside of the building only, that you'll see one wall looks different from the other. From a structural standpoint, cutting the slots, inserting the reinforcing and grouting it, structurally, the wall will be adequate. It will be, structurally, is adequate on paper from the structural calculation standpoint, as tearing it down and rebuilding it with new, because the bars will still be 32 inches on center. The only difference is if you decide to go stacked bond...
Honey.
From, from a common sense, practical standpoint, the wall is a little bit stronger when it's toothed together.
And you'd have a bigger core to put your rod in. It's less solid.
With two core blocks, yes, you would.
And the cost differential is 2,000 for the 32 feet for the metal bars versus 9,000 or 11,000?
11,000. So it's a $9,000 difference per wall, per classroom. So if we do a teardown, you're talking about, just in this phase, oh boy, one, two, three, four, probably five, six. So six times nine, you're, you're going to be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 to tear down just the classroom walls. My, we haven't gotten the numbers back from Vogel yet on tearing down the three walls around the stairs. But I'm anticipating that to have a price tag of somewhere around $40,000.
On a project the size of, what was the initial project, just under a million or...
1.1 million.
So we're looking at about $100,000 over run on a 1.1 million dollar project?
So far, on this first phase, we've already approved, there was about a $10, $11,000 extra to take down the walls below the ca, or below the windows in front of the cabinets. And there's been a couple thousand dollars for a couple other things. So right now, we've approved, I think it's about 15,000 in extras. So, yeah, by the time we would finish Phase One, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 100,000.
If you eliminate everything, you have less decisions to make, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you're pulling it all out and putting it all back in new...
Yeah.
You don't have to decide every day what has to be fixed and what has to be replaced.
Yep.
That is true.
Al, can I ask a question about how replacing all the block affects the inside cabinetry?
Yeah. He's, he's leading me.
That's how we don't.
Yeah, all of the, the inside components inside every classroom, if we tear down, creates, you know, more work for the district and more work for the contractor, because there are items inside of each classroom. There's cabinetry, there's shelving mounted to the wall. All of that stuff will have to be removed. More of the room will have to be emptied out. Right now, the district basically was responsible for clearing the rooms. Pretty much, most everything was moved from the wall where the window is and just pushed to the other half of the room. And a temporary wall was built to protect it and the inside of the building. So, you know, the rooms may have to, just see the corner outside rooms will have to be emptied. But, I mean, that, it is...
Would we be able to reuse the cabinetry, if I'm being clear?
Well, right now, what we're doing at the walls below the windows, we made the decision to leave the cabinets in place, just because of the time and the expense to remove those cabinets. The science rooms, if you remember, have piping run through them for all the gas. Some of them have water in them. We would have to dismantle all of that to be able to remove the cabinets. So in order to save time and money, we made the decision to leave the cabinets. And we're going to place a piece of visqueen, you know, like clear plastic, flexible plastic up against the cabinet. And then they're just going to lay the block in front of the cabinet. So the decision was that, or the thought process was that, you know, what are the chances that those cabinets are going to have to come out and be taken out and never be put back? You know, they're science rooms, they've been there for 37 years. In the future, they're probably going to stay science rooms and they're going to need cabinetry. So, you know, maybe at some point down the road, you replace the cabinets, but you're going to take them out and you're going to put cabinets back again. So right now, for the block that, just as of this week, on the west side below the windows, the new block has been put in place with that method.
And there's no damage interior on the inside where the cabinetry in that wall?
Cabinetry looked pretty good. There was a little bit of water damage from where the windows were leaking. There was a lit, there was definitely water damage in the backsplash on the countertop, because that's where the water hit first. But that was already planned to be replaced. The particle board, that was the substrate of the backsplash in some areas just fell apart from the water. But the cabinets were in pretty shape.
So if the board chose to replace those walls, what is the timeframe that we're looking at in terms of occupying those classrooms? I mean, is there, how comfortable are you feeling with that, that those classrooms are going to be ready? Because we have no other space in the district, I have to remind you, unless we bring in portable classrooms.
I don't know the answer to that, because Vogel Brothers hasn't been able to study that. You know, if we were to, if the decision was to tear down all of those walls entirely and replace them, we'd have to have them study the schedule to see what kind of an impact that that would make. Because that's going to definitely add more time.
Is there still an opportunity to narrow the scope of Phase One?
Yes, we could do that.
Before we start tearing all the exterior wall and we, we're running out of time and resources to deal with it this summer? I mean, I'm, I'm anxious about having that building ready on time.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not just the classrooms. It's all the events and activities that occur there. It's going to be a mess.
And that's a definite concern.
If one were to scale back Phase One, what would, what would you delay? What, what areas or would you recommend delaying? Or what activities would you recommend, recommend delaying into Phase Two or, you know, into next summer?
I'd have to look at that more closely and talk with Vogel and get their input on it as well.
Does the contracts that we've signed limit the choices that we can make right now?
I don't think so. I think they would be more than open. I mean, they've been very great to work with.
Well, they see five years' worth of work here, too.
Just on one building.
I was going to ask the question.
Not being facetious, I'm being...
I, I hope the general contractors and the contractors who built Jack Young Middle School are not the same ones that built the high school. That's all that I'm concerned about right now.
This one school? Well, there's nothing wrong with this one that I'm aware of.
That we know, right? That we know. That's my point.
I mean, our existing staff, too, have a capacity for what they can handle in terms of interior in the building. Is that right, Patrick?
That's right.
So let's not take on more than we can handle.
Well, I guess Crystal Prince have a really good point. If we can modify the scope of the project and do it appropriately, I realize the cabinet issues and the interior issues become problematic. But the first decision becomes, how are we going to fix this moving forward, starting with the structure of the building? How are we going to button it up this summer? And how are we going to plan to deal with, you know, the priority areas next year?
Well, I would just caution the word of appropriate versus the choice between, of these issues that I'm looking at. Because I'm hearing that structurally, we're okay. And I don't want that option to be dismissed as inappropriate, not intentionally, but just, so as we make, as we try to make these decisions, especially in terms of the timing, I'm, I'm less concerned about, I, I'm concerned about the financial responsibilities, but most importantly, about the structural integrity of what we're doing.
And right now, we only have 50 percent of the brick torn off in this phase. And we've been taking it a wall at a time, you know, because we, we don't know what we're going to run into. And we didn't expect to see what we saw when we tore the first wall down, the first 30 foot or 32 foot. You know, and we keep moving around the building, tearing off 32 feet at a time. So who knows what we'll find as we go.
Knowing what you know now, is there any concerns of, of slowing down our progression? In other words, limiting the scope to only 50 percent of the area? And now, essentially, what we're doing is we're doubling our timetable to finish this project instead of being two or three phases or two or three years. Now, it's going to become a four or five-year project. Is there any structural concerns of delaying at that period of time? Obviously, there is.
Well, but couldn't...
Well, you know, it's the reason why we fenced off the outside, you know. It's a, it's a risk and maybe slight, but it's why we fenced off the outside, keep people away, you know, from a safety standpoint. This particular wall, classroom that we, the first section we opened up was done first for a reason, because that was the worst, you know, around the whole building.
Well, but we can't live with, we can't have a middle school with a snow fence around it for five years.
But, but couldn't we increase the number of workers on the project next summer if we knew in advance that we had a timeline to deal with, to keep the project moving at a fast pace?
Yeah, I suppose that's possible. You know, right now, the way they priced it, they priced it with so many men on the crew, and it's based on the number of scaffolding sections that they have there.
So that might have to be adjusted as we look at narrowing the scope of what we can do this summer.
Well, apparently, we don't want to rush them too fast, because it sounds like 37 years ago, that might have been the approach.
Who did that project 37 years ago?
You want me to answer that question?
Well...
Yeah?
Yes.
My understanding is that Kramer Brothers was the general contractor. I do not know who the mason was or who the steel erector was or who poured the concrete.
Well, then I would suggest you don't hire Kramer's again. If this is the kind of work that they...
I don't know that I could make that statement. A lot has changed in 37 years. Kramer Brothers today is a very reputable contractor. And I've worked with them on a number of jobs and have had no issues with them.
They were reputable 37 years ago, too.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I wasn't in this industry.
Well, where was our district oversight, though, too? You know, that 37 years ago?
Well, we, we need to move this issue forward, not tonight, but each and every day of this project. It needs to get moved forward, because clearly, you can't be coming back to a board to update them with pictures and hours-long discussions regarding something that I really am not qualified to answer.
Yeah. Let me, I guess, you know, a lot of you are hearing this for the first time. You know, every day, coming to this job site has been, you know, an adventure, so to speak. When things first get taken down, it's alarming. But the bad areas are being, are being rebuilt. And I know, for an example, if we go to the Draper Street side of the building, trying to think what classroom number that is on the upper floor. Well, I guess the lower floor. Rita Mathers is down below, and was anybody here from the middle school?
Probably that lower number, 303, 302.
But in that outside corner on the east side, the Draper Street side, the south wall, that block, that six-inch block in both of those classrooms on the inside is fairly decent-looking. Out of probably all of the, the walls within the areas where we're tearing the brick off, the inside of those walls looks good. In terms of cracking, the shrinkage cracking that's going on, and shrinkage cracking is just that. It's shrinkage cracking, it's cosmetic. It doesn't mean that structurally, it's unsound. So I guess take that into account in the decision, because it is a, a financial expense and a time concern as well with tearing them down and totally rebuilding.
I, I would like to suggest, and I've got four other board members, if they have a difference of opinion, I totally respect that. I'd like to suggest that we proceed with the way that you outlined the south wall, where the wall is structurally sound. And you proceed using the same methodology that you've used thus far as you come across rooms, whether the wall stays or the wall goes. That may mean you still have to scale back this project to have the classrooms ready by September 1st or before that. And yes, you're probably going to have to be laying... And yes, you're probably gonna have to be laying brick after that. And authorize change orders to total seventy-five thousand dollars before we have to talk about it as a board again. I just don't see the rationale for tearing that, that south wall down, but I'm not an expert either. I just-
Seventy-five thousand from this point forward, or what, in total, what we-
We've authorized fifteen thousand as of today already.
In overruns?
But if, if the expectation of the south wall was forty to fifty thousand dollars to, to tear that stairwell and wall out.
That's, that's just my gut feeling.
And my gut feeling tells me it's gonna be more than that.
Could be.
You're gonna have to find a way to stabilize the upper levels.
I mean, if we're, if we're already somewhat concerned about the timeline of this project and completing it on time, the last thing we wanna do is have to delay decisions a week at a time and stall the project moving forward. I mean, I don't have the answer about what authority the board is comfortable giving Patrick and Al to keep this project moving forward, but we gotta keep it moving.
Well, just, just so we repeat this over and over again, the structural integrity is paramount to anything else. Regardless of interior conditions, regardless of timing of getting kids back into classrooms, it doesn't matter. Structural integrity is everything. Now, if our engineers believe that structural integrity is maintained or achieved to what new construction would be, then I'm satisfied with moving forward in a solution that, that gives us the same structural integrity as new. But, but we won't make any decision, or at least I won't be voting for anything based on timelines or what happens on the interior. I mean, those are just things we now have to live with.
And just, you know, let's step back and remember where this all started. My original recommendation was to completely tear it down. District got a second opinion, and that second opinion said there's no reason to do that. And so, where we're at now was somewhat of a compromise between the two. The second opinion that you got didn't even feel that the reinforcing bars were necessary in the wall. You know, it was my feeling that the reinforcing bars needed to be added to the wall from a structural standpoint, so.
Second opinion could have changed their mind, too, once they saw this, you know?
It's possible.
Well, I'm with, with Sean. Our guidance needs to be provided by you. You know, you are the structural engineers and the overseers of this project for us. So, your recommendations carry a lot of weight. My feeling is, as Sean has indicated, where you believe structurally it works and is sound for your children, then I'm happy. Where you feel that a section needs to be teared down, as you have done already, tear it down. I agree with Kevin. Let's give you a figure to work with and report back to us in a month or two.
It could be before that.
It could be three days.
Whenever we reach that, that figure.
Well, probably in, in two weeks. Depending on how they stage this with the changes that we're making, two to three weeks, they'll probably have the rest of the brick off of this phase of work for the summer. And at that point, we'll have a good handle, you know, where we're at.
Our, our next regular meeting is July ninth. Maybe we should just schedule.
I'm comfortable with the change orders being done, determined by Al and being approved by the district without it coming in front of the board, as long as the concept is, well, the, the dollars we're running into is structural in nature, this has gotta happen. What are we gonna do? Hold another meeting and talk about it for another couple hours, just to come to the same point of, okay? You know, I don't wanna put an arbitrary dollar figure out there, obviously, we've gotta march back in front of a board to talk about this issue again. It, it is what it is.
Did you have that in the form of a motion, or was that just a suggestion?
I, I would amend the motion to authorize change orders up to a hundred thousand dollars. To me, if we get to the point where spending a hundred thousand dollars for more than what we originally, we need to sit down and talk about it again.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Is that for this phase, this summer?
Yes.
This summer's work?
I guess we need to be kept advised as well as you can in terms of how we're progressing on the project and completing it on time. So that if we run into situations here where we're gonna have to look for space, that we have some time to do that.
So, what I have been doing since we've started is, you know, Jim has been copying a lot of the emails.
So, if you would copy Patrick and me, both?
Both of you?
Yes, please.
I can do that.
The other decision that you were asking for a remedy on was that entrance foyer that's in the back. Is that-
The soffit.
Yeah, right. Can you answer or direction on that? I do not have an estimate from them. Vogel's working on it. And we're talking about an area that's-
Is that by the loading deck?
No. This is, it's near the stairs, so it's on the south end of the building on the Circle Drive side. It's where those four aluminum doors are that you enter in, next to the stairs.
Okay.
So, there's that soffit in there, so it's, you know, tearing down that soffit, tearing some of the brick out that's up there, replacing that brick, rebuilding the soffit, re-insulating it.
I, I think that's a meaningful expense. As you say, the, the building standards have changed, the vapor barrier should be added. It's an area with doors and near stairway. And if it's already showing signs of pulling, pulling apart, the brick pulling apart, it seems to me that it, that we're going to get in, in some years, a greatly improved building. Let's do it right. Be consistent.
Is that a motion?
We still have the first motion to vote on.
Right.
Is the soffit structurally?
It's structurally sound.
It is.
Yeah, we, we can put it back together again and it'll be structurally sound. It's just more a matter of, you know, now we've got this much torn apart, if it were to be replaced, now is the time to do it.
What did you say the cost difference was on that?
We don't have a number yet.
Right.
I think one of the other things we should think about, too, is that this is not a public entrance.
It's not?
No, people not come and go through here. The only thing that this entrance is used for is during fire drills. Those doors are locked all the time.
Well, that-
Now, you absolutely can see it when you go in the Circle Drive, 'cause it's the first thing you're gonna see when you look over to your right. It's that entrance right there. So, you know, cosmetically, visually, that would be a concern on one side versus nobody uses it.
Well, my concern is not cosmetic at all. It is structural. But the fact that brick is pulling away from, uh, from the wall.
The brick, excuse me, what you see right here is about sixteen inches from the bottom of that surface up. And the brick is being held there right now by the wire ties that go back to the block. And the plan is that there's gonna be new, you see, this is existing brick behind there. So, new brick is gonna be laid up to the underside of that. So, once that new brick is in place, that sixteen inches of old brick isn't gonna go anywhere. It's hidden to view, because it's all above the soffit, you can't see it. So, this would be just a cosmetic replacement, basically.
Well, then, no, it's not a motion.
Well, let's act on Kevin's motion.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Carrie, none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
And are we clear now that also in terms of this soffit, you're gonna go ahead and?
We'll put the soffit back together.
Back together, structurally sound.
Yep.
And we'll hang some doilies.
What's the timing, you know, in the progression of the project that needs to be done this summer? And what's been already torn, you know, where you're at? When does that, when does that really come into play, whether it's rebuilt or whether it's torn?
Soffit?
Yeah.
Well, right now, because if we're gonna demo it, it's gotta come out of there right now. So, what we'll do is-
Do we have to make a motion to that?
No.
No, they're gonna, that's what they're gonna do.
Part of the plan was to need it to begin with, so that, that's all part of the plan. So, basically, then, between Patrick and I and Crystal, I'll keep Patrick and Crystal in the loop on schedule and pricing. We have what we call proposal requests, where I put together documentation of additional work that has to be done. I've got four of those right now that I just got pricing back from Vogel late this afternoon. There's three more of them to come back. Two of those three were tearing down walls and replacing them in whole, but we won't be doing that, so maybe I'll even have them hold off on finishing the pricing on that. So, we're gonna continue forward with cutting the slots in the walls that we feel will be structurally sound once they're routed back in. Areas like the one wall of the classroom, we are tearing that down in, in its entirety and will replace it. And then the stairwell walls will remain intact and we will reinforce those in place. So, that's the direction, just so I'm understanding.
Like you said, Al, once you get down the road another four or five weeks, you could really lay those block, and you can lay the brick after the kids are in school.
Yeah, you'd wanna have the brick laid where the windows are, because the disruption of glass would be pretty disruptive. But the entire south end of the building, where there are no windows for the most part, other than that connecting link to the stairwell, there'd be a noise disruption, because, you know, you're gonna have equipment and a saw cutting and forkless moving around outside, but yeah, that, that brick could be laid after school session. So, just to end this on a positive note, let me show you a picture of what, what it does look like after it's fixed up. And here's an example, you know, existing steel beam up here across the top. I mean, looks great. Once they remove all the rust and the old primer off it and they get coated with the epoxy paint, it looks awesome. These vertical angles are, that's all existing steel. It cleaned up wonderfully. Wherever there was inefficient welds, you know, those have all been increased. They've added more weld to hold everything in place. This is a brand-new steel beam. You can see the diagonal braces coming back, which are gonna be exposed in the classroom. I walked up to that now and grabbed ahold of that beam and tried to shake it, and it's rock solid. I mean, this is gonna be a great solution to fixing the problem. You know, another progress shot, you can see the new steel beam in place here and then up above on the second floor. This is that rusty, old, nasty shelf angle that was in place. That rust has been cleaned off, it's been repainted, and it looks awesome. Get a little better shot of it here. They have one more coat of paint to put on, that's why you see the, what do they call that? Zebré grass is kinda what it looks like. Another shot of the steel beam. We added steel reinforcing going back into the building and, and these little vertical pieces to tie all this together to transfer the load back to different locations.
Is, is that beam bolted like that or is that just wet blocks?
That was for the flag.
I could probably hit you a beam like that if you want.
I thought they got it from Wisconsin Metal.
Yeah, here, here's another one, you know, this, this beam, this is an existing steel beam up at the roof level. You know, it, it was rusty and looked kinda nasty, the primer on it, you know, wasn't in the greatest shape. It's all been removed and, you know, it has two coats of brand-new epoxy paint on it and it looks awesome.
Did you have to do that on both sides or no?
Just on the outside, where the moisture is. Yeah, the inside looks like the day it was put up. And then here, you can see, this is the brand-new block that's on the ground floor below the windows that was just laid today. It looks wonderful, so it's making a lot of progress. And this is a shot up on the second floor, just as it's about noon today. Masons, this is all brand-new block that's being laid in underneath where those windows are gonna be. And then, you know, the steel beam with the diagonal braces going back in. So, it's coming together great. All the new stuff is, it's gonna be rock solid when it's done.
Expensive art council.
Yeah, so that will keep forging forward.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, from that, we go to continuous school improvement. And first, to talk about the summer school and the summer school update, Mr. Bilston and Kathy Thornburg.
I don't mind starting, unless you'd like to, Kathy. We, I don't really have any papers for you or any PowerPoints today. But, uh,
Thanks for that.
Just want, just wanna give you an update on summer school.
Just give us the good news, we need it.
Me, as you know, we, we haven't had a summer school for quite a number of years and we're off to a really good start. We're in our third week of summer school at Gordon L. Wilson Elementary School. We have a hundred and thirty elementary students in kindergarten through fifth grade. And they report at eight, unless they're having breakfast, and about seven-thirty. And they have a session for an hour and a half. And then they have a half-hour recess and then another session. And their sessions are math and literacy. And I think overall, we're seeing this working really well, because the students are getting individualized instruction in, in small class sizes. And the teachers are able to really differentiate and provide those students what they need. We use assessment data to look at those students that really need a jumpstart to the next grade. And I think, I think we're being able to accomplish that. I think the other thing that's really positive is just to see how many families are also involved in, in our, in our Kid Stop program. And to keep in mind that those two programs are coexisting at Gordon L. Wilson this summer. We have a hundred, we have two hundred students signed up for summer Kid Stop this year. And that's up from a hundred and eighty last year, and every year, it's grown from, anywhere from fifteen to twenty students per summer. And so, to watch how all of that is flowing is another, I think, real positive aspect of, of our summer school and Kid Stop program and how that's working out so well over at Gordon L. Wilson. And to know that there are so many advantages of that. The wraparound services that the families have that, that want their children to go to summer school and then to Kid Stop. And the access that we have to the Bearwood Middle School pool. We have ninety-seven students that have bought a pool pass from Kid Stop. And over a hundred students go up there on every Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday for swimming. And this session, we have sixty-nine Kid Stoppers going up there for swim lessons in addition to the swimming times. So, all of that, I think, is working really well. And I think it's showing us that not only can these numbers exist very successfully at Gordon L. Wilson in the summer, but we can grow our summer school and our Kid Stop. And I think we have a very nice building for that to continue to go leaps and bounds. The other thing is, I have to give, you know, the city of Bearwood credit and the village of West Bearwood. They've provided us crossing guards so students can get to and from summer school. Those that are walking at important, you know, points of access on the busy roads. And they've, you know, really stepped forward to help with that aspect of our summer school operation. So, just a real quick report about summer school at GLW School. And if anybody ever wants to come on over and take a walk-through and, and see how things are going, you're always welcome to.
All right, and I have the high school and middle school. I have seventy-five students taking a hundred and sixteen courses at the high school. We have twenty-two taking science, twenty-seven in English, forty-one in English. And I put twenty-six plus online, because Rhonda has kids that are here and then kids that are doing partly at home or maybe all at home, depending on their situation, so. I did contact all of the teachers and I wanted them to give me some input as to what they're specifically doing in their classrooms that would be kinda exciting to hear about. The English teachers, Elise Carlos and Elise Johnson, said the things they're most proud of are the use of an online learning system, so that students have a chance to use technology and can also move at their own pace. They do daily journaling, Tuesdays, News Days. The focus is on critically reading news articles, so that students are aware of the world around them. And they have collaboration with Penny Johnson and the Public Library to- And they have collaboration with Penny Johnson and the public library to encourage and promote independent reading for some book talks and to sign interested students up for the Summer Read-athon. Rhonda Kaufhammer said, "I have students who have been setting goals on completing their lesson and they have been meeting those goals. Most students need to complete a unit a week. Students are starting to take more notes and ask questions. It's been a wonderful time to sit with students one-on-one and explain English grammar terms or algebra formulas and then see them put into practice." I actually got to sit with one of our students and do some English alone, which is kind of fun, just having to pop in and a student needed help, so I got to sit down. I don't get to do that very often during the school year, so I really enjoyed that. She's had Linay Javis in the room quite a bit, working with special ed students, said it's been very helpful to have her in there. I have times when one or me is not enough, so she helps to keep the students moving and her position has been helpful. Stephanie Brightman is teaching science. She teaches physical science and biology. In science, we've been focusing on main key ideas, doing a variety of things, including notes, labs, worksheets, and other various activities. Clint Brickell is doing the math and they're using an Alex, it's called the Alex Math Program, which is online. The kids are enjoying, they can all work at their own pace. And he has kids doing pre-algebra, algebra, geometry, algebra II, so quite a variety in the class. But they can work at their own pace. Once it got up and running, then, you know, the kids are doing a great job. I'd walk by there and they are focused and, you know, kind of moving on. They want to, they want to get that credit this summer, so. And then Linay Javis is designated to work with special education students. She has 18 special education students taking 30 courses. Most of her time is spent one-on-one with students as needed. Erin and I talked the other day, we kind of talked about the highlights, what we see going on. And one thing, we, he and I try to get up through the halls three or four times a morning just to walk through the classrooms and walk through the hallways, see what's going on. The kids are engaged all the time. There's always some different activities going on and it just, it's great to see because they are high school students and it's, you know, it's, there are other things they could be doing, but they are really engaged and seem to be enjoying themselves. The response from the parents and students has been positive. We talk to parents every day, whether it's parents coming in to eat breakfast with their kids or we call parents of kids that haven't shown up yet or maybe are tardy. We call and communicate with them every single day and we've got great comments back about what's going on and what we're providing for the kids. There were actually calls after summer school started for more kids to join once the word got out and even calls from other districts wanting to participate. The teachers are doing a nice job making the classes interesting, fun, and challenging to earn, the kids earn credit back, but they're changing it up. It's not the same as during the school year. It's, they wanted to make it different, challenging and interesting, which could be a challenge in five weeks, but they're doing a good job with it. And Erin and I said, we feel like it's, we'd like to see the numbers bigger and we think they will be because in the past, when I was here, we had more students doing this, but they were used to it. They would line up at the end of the year and say, "All right, I know I can do some summer school for credit recovery. Now the word is out. I think we'll have more kids. The option is there, I think they'll plan better." Some of the kids had jobs planned already and they had maybe camps or different things. In summer school, the word wasn't really out. So it's out now. I think that, you know, if they're struggling during the year, we talk to them all the time about how to make up that credit. I think we'll see more kids next year, so. Middle school, we've got around 68 students. They are focusing in the areas of math and literacy. We have three different classrooms going on. One of them, I think, is team teaching, the English is team teaching, doing some fun activities. I actually saw them down in the stairwell today and, you know, kind of sitting around in groups doing activities. So, you know, just, just a lot of different things going on. It's been really positive.
And we'll come back at the end of summer school and let you know what our success has been in completion rates. And we always too try to get feedback from the parents and students, like Kathy said, to improve the program for future years. We're hoping to expand with some enrichment too to serve all kids as well. Any questions on the academic program? Mary, you're on.
All right. Well, more positives. First of all, you know, this is a new program for us and we appreciate the fact that the school district is allowing this to happen. And it's a federally funded program. We've never done it before, but it seems to be going well. I was kind of nervous beforehand because we had no idea how many kids were going to show up to eat. And so that's from the food end of it is kind of scary, but it's really, really working out well. Just going off my little update here, customers that we have, the Kid Stop kids are eating breakfast and lunch Monday through Friday. The summer school kids are eating breakfast and lunch Monday through Thursday. Fridays are a little bit slower day because there aren't any summer school kids. Boys and girls clubs are, is coming to, there's a bus that comes daily from the Boys and Girls Club to the high school, brings the kids here for lunch and then takes it back to, takes it back to the Boys and Girls Club. And that's been community funded for that, all the days. What? Partially, right. Lutheran Social Services are coming every day. They've got a van load of kids they bring every day to the high school, so they're appreciating that. And then, of course, at the high school, we also have the physical skills kids, various sports camps. Last week we had football camp in here, those guys who are definitely eating. And then we, you know, as far as community kids coming in, at GLW it's very few, but we kind of encourage them to come to the high school because we have a lot more space here. And, you know, GLW they have enough going on with Kid Stop program and the summer school kids. But it's growing daily. We've tried different ways, avenues to let the public know because, you know, I think a lot of it, just like with the summer school part that Kathy was talking about, you know, it hasn't been around for a while, so the word's getting out. People really can't believe that this is free and they don't have to do anything for it, you know. And so, you know, they really don't have to fill out paperwork or, you know, something like that. So, you know, now the word's coming out. And so we're getting more parents bringing in kids, like some parents will bring in like five or six kids. They might have, you know, half the neighborhood there or something and they come over and have lunch here, which is great. And we even have some parents bringing in children that are really young, like, you know, one year or less. And so, you know, these are all things that are new to us, but they've been really fun.
Mary, I'm sorry, does the federal government provide any signage, you know?
Yeah, we have, we have signs. There's a sign right up by the, where it used to be, the message board up front. And then we have one at GLW that's sticking the ground.
So our citizens understand their federal government is providing this program for them.
Yeah, and it was in the paper and we've had it, you know, we've sent the dialer out. We've tried to communicate any way we can before the end of school and so forth, so. But word of mouth, I think, really helps a lot because people are like, "Yeah, I was there" and it really does work, you know, so. And, you know, everybody was nice and.
And the food is great.
I hope so. Anyway, so, you know, it's similar to, you know, what we served in the school year, so that's great. But anyway, I just want to give you, you know, we're only two weeks into the program, but just a little bit, a recap on how we're doing financially and hopefully we'll continue to grow. But for breakfast, we get $1.93 per meal reimbursement. And then for lunch, we get a $3.38 per meal reimbursement. And that's it for income, that's all we have, so. And then basically for meals per day, breakfast, we're doing about 150, this is both locations together. We're doing about 150 breakfasts per day, Monday through Thursday, and only 50 on Fridays because again, we don't have the summer school kids there. And then lunch, we're doing about, on average, 350. We've had, some days we've hit over 400. That's Monday through Thursday and then on Fridays. The first Friday was a little bit lower, but again, with the word of mouth spreading, this past Friday, we doubled our number of people that we served here at the high school. So we're up to about 175 on Fridays. As far as income, I mean, I don't want to go read all these numbers to you, but basically total per week income based on these numbers is $6,580. And expenses based on these numbers is $6,190. So we're still on the plus side of that. And we did have it, of course, because it's federally funded, there's all kinds of paperwork, there's all kinds of things that you have to do. I mean, you know, I mean, we even have to make sure that, you know, there's all kinds of rules, of course, when the government decides that they're going to give away money. So, you know, one of the rules is that the children have to take so many items on the tray, which is nothing different than during the school year. I mean, if they're going to reimburse the meal, they're going to, they want to make sure that there's more than just a carton of milk on that tray, you know. So we have to encourage the kids to take enough there. And then on the flip side, you know, they're not, they don't have to eat it, if they don't want to eat it all, they don't have to, but they can't take it with them. And so, of course, that is kind of a, you know, an issue that we have to keep an eye on. But I will say that the high school and at GLW, they provide us with great backup as far as, you know, keeping order in the lunchroom and so forth, and we haven't had any problems. I mean, you know, I wondered if like kids are just, a bunch of kids might get dropped off and who would really keep an eye on these kids, but we really haven't had a single problem at all that I'm aware of. I mean, I think you guys could attest to that. And so, you know, when the DPI came in, they did a review of the program last Friday. We didn't have any problems with paperwork or the way we did things and so forth, so that's all good. So they won't come back for three years, so that's a good thing too. But anyway, so, so all in all, I mean, again, positive, you know, positive report. We, it's rolling along smoothly and hopefully, just like the summer school, we can continue to grow, possibly be, as I said before, I mean, the next spot I think we need to be is over at the Al Berman School, because that's where our highest percentage of free reduced kids are. And those kids may come, you know, they might bike over, walk over. I mean, even if there isn't summer school there, you know, we could still open up that site for a place to serve lunch. And then we can also serve, I mean, the program is pretty open. I mean, you could like go to a park and you could bring meals to the park and the kids could come there. Of course, again, you have to follow the rules that they set out for us, but, you know, there is that option. But this year, we just wanted to stick with the, with the two sites where we had a captive audience already and just see how we could go from there. So next week, with the Fourth of July week being, you guys won't be in, that'll give us some real ideas on how we are going to do when summer school isn't in. So anyway, any questions?
Well done. Well done.
Thanks to all of you for your supervision and leadership with the programs. It's exciting to see it going.
Are there any rules from the federal government on, let's say you've got $1,000 left over at the end of the year, can you save that for next year or are there any stipulations there?
Basically, any money that's left over in the fund gets put into the, into the regular school food service fund. You know, in other words, if we were to profit $1,000, we would just put that money into our, our regular, the school district food service fund, yeah.
Mary, you gave us a statistic at an earlier board meeting regarding the significant, I think you said leaps and bounds in terms of free and supported lunch and breakfasts. What is our current statistic in terms of our population during the school year?
District wide, we are at around 44% of the students are getting their meals free reduced price.
Thank you.
How many staff are involved in?
It's pretty limited. I mean, there's about 10 people altogether. They don't all, I mean, some of them only were a couple hours a day just to get through the, you know, get through lunch and so forth. So it's, it's much easier, it's much easier to run. The menu planning part of it is a little bit simpler. You know, the components of the meal, you know, whether it be the fruit, the vegetable, the protein, the bread item and the milk, I mean, it's a little bit simpler than during the school year as to what we have to do and don't have to do. So that makes it a little better too. But we, we're glad to be here and we hope we can move on in the future.
I think there are a lot of people that aren't glad you're here.
Yeah, everybody's happy when they come here, so.
We're going to try to get another plug in the newspaper as well and thank the business donors for providing funding for the busing for Boys and Girls Club.
Hear that, Ed? No, a different Ed, different Ed. Just want to keep you awake. Okay, thank you for the update. Keep up the good work. Brings us to the portion of the consent agenda. First up, I'll advance the approval of the May receipts and dispersments, Mr. McNeven.
Finance committee met and reviewed the receipts and dispersments and I so moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by McNeven, seconded by Mortimer. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the approval of the May receipts and dispersments signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Again to Mr. McNeven for the approval of the budget transfer request.
Everybody received a copy of the year-end budget transfer request or, I mean, I think I can find my copy. So I can show you what it looks like.
Two-page paper.
Oh, well. The budget transfer request that, there, just have a look at our timeline, shows both Fund 10 and Fund 27. There is a grand total of shifting of $488,269. This represents all the transfers that have been approved by the finance committee throughout the year. At the end of the year, it's culminated with the final approval by the full board. The reason being is we publish a school budget at the beginning of the year. This lets everybody know on public record what our adjustments to those budgets legally were. And this is just moving from one category to a different one. Perhaps we spent a little additional dollars in curriculum and we offset that with spending less dollars in a different area. So you can see the ins and the outs. So finance committee reviewed this and recommends approval to the full board. I so.
Motion by McNeven, seconded by Mortimer. Any further discussion? Questions? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks to finance for those items. And Mr. McNeven brings us to personnel recommendations. I am not aware of any resignations. I'm not aware of any new hires. I'm not aware of any required approval for postings. And the item that's on here is the long-term substitute, which would be for Al Bierman, and that is a counselor position. And the recommendation to the board was for Casey Ruland. Entertaining motion to that effect?
Saved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Bedro, seconded by McNeven. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations to Casey Ruland. Brings us to the working session and back to combination tag team of Mr. McNeven and Mr. Long for the approval of the 2012-13 budget. Who wants to go first?
I shouldn't use the word want. We're going to be taking a look at two documents tonight. The one I have in this hand is the new fund balance classification. It's based on GASB standards. They have everybody adopting the same format per resolution, so this is what the board will officially be adopting. These are the fund balances and.
Revenues and expenditures.
Yeah, the revenues and expenditures for the audited 2010-11, the unaudited this year, 11-12, and then the budget for next year. So everybody adopts this one. However, this is just a whole bunch of numbers on a page, which unless you know the detail, it's difficult to understand. So Jim has also prepared the 2012-13 draft budget proposal, which we're going to recommend adopting tonight. And I'll give you the highlights. What is different in this budget from this year? What is different in next year's budget to this year's budget? Well, the first thing that happened is we see a 1.4 million decline in state aid. Okay, so right off the top, we're getting a million four less from the state. There is $688,000 or $680,000 less in federal jobs grant. We've been talking about the jobs grants for years. That was federal dollars that came out of the stimulus program. That is no longer available. We knew that was coming. We used that up in last year's budget. That is not available in this year's budget, so those dollars go back into Fund 10 as far as expenditure goes. So that's 1.4 million from the state we're short and about $700,000. That means the local tax levy increase is about $2 million bucks. Okay, we're down 2.1 million, but the local tax levy only goes up $2 million. What are some of the changes in the expenditure side? There's $850,000 less in maintenance. $500,000 of that was allocated to the track this year, $350,000 in additional projects that we had been approving in the last two or three. It was actually accomplished last summer. That was the two chimneys at the high school and at Abe, the wall in the basement at Abe, and then the cafeteria wall at the middle school. That's how we spent the $350,000 just as the budget was getting extended. And there's also a reduction in curriculum as we've invested in the last couple of years in curriculum, there isn't as much need in this upcoming budget. And finally, we're making our last debt payment of approximately $40 million. This is the debt that was issued for our prior service obligation for our retirement and this is the last payment on that. After this payment is made, the Bearwood School District is essentially debt-free. So those are the big numbers. And those are the big changes. People always want to know about the levy. What's going to happen with the levy? And it's important to know that. As you go to the back, you'll see the tax levy comparison. There are so many assumptions that go into the budget given the timing and where we're at. There are so many assumptions that go into the budget given the timing and where we're at. We don't know our state aid number. We're making an estimate. Obviously, we don't know our pupil count, so that's an estimate. We don't know our total ends and outs as far as open and only go, so that's an estimate. But based on where we're at today, with the $2 million increase in the total levy dollars, that would make our estimated mill rate of $9.45 per thousand, $9.45. And that's an increase over prior years. That is substantially lower tax rate than our neighbors. I think Reedsburg's somewhere in that 10.50. They're a dollar higher than us and Fortage is almost 11, so they're a dollar and a half higher than us. So, we're still doing it fairly efficiently, with good use of our dollars. Given that, if there's questions, now's the time to ask. Otherwise, I so moved to approve budget as proposed.
Do we second? To the motion?
I will second. Do we have built into the budget estimates the monies that we have discussed in personnel for performance-based administrative?
Right now, as we have in the past, we budgeted 2% for salaries and wages.
The mill rate goes up from last year about $1.30 per thousand?
We were at 8.16.
And does that then cover the losses, the loss from the jobs program and the loss from the state revenues? The increase in the mill rate brings us back to where we were a year ago?
It takes those factors into consideration for developing the budget.
Yeah, as we know it now. This year, for the first year in many years, the DPI is going to give us an early estimate of equalized aid around the 1st of July. So, sometime during next week, I would think that that would be available. We'll know whether our guess of a 10% decrease is a little light or it, it, it could go anywhere between 10 and 15%. That's the word coming out of Madison. So, there may be an adjustment needed there. And like Sean says, that'll be the first change. Then when we have our third Friday come in September, that'll be the second change. And then the 1st of October, we'll find out what our equalized value did. We're hoping it at least stayed the same or possibly went up a little bit. That would have an effect on reducing the mill rate. And then finally, in about the 15th or so of October, the DPI will certify the estimate that they gave us early in July and we'll know exactly then the dollars that we're getting. So, there are going to be a number of changes that are going to take place. But based on the information that we have available to us now, this, this is the best estimate that we've got.
Did you offer a second, Mr. Bedro?
I did second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the approval of the 2012-2013 budget as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Took less than the wall.
Next is the CISA VI School District of Barrow, 2012-13 agreement, otherwise known as contractual obligation. The total expenditure involved in this is $3,250. Last year it was $28.75. Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor approving the CISA VI contract as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Undertaining motion for executive close session as posted.
So moved.
Second? Your call?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.